The regular meeting of Anderson City Council Wednesday, March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. It's called Order. First order of business is the minutes of the February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, I will move to adopt those minutes, approve those minutes.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made and seconded. Brooke is not here yet?
No.
Adam, you have a recommendation for us?
So we got a few quotes on different doctors department, kind of what we were interested in, and what was would make sense for us as a partner right now. With the chain and radios kind of happening, we got a quote for radios. Each radio is quoted at five thousand two hundred fifty dollars apiece. So we're asking for three of those, and then in today's climate and in today's environment, we're asking for also to get four bulletproof vests for our rescue team to have in a medical situation where we could be put into harm's way or a fire situation, any of those. I mean, you can draw the scene up if you will for those. You can take a look at kind of quotes if you wanted to see it. You can take one. Just came under twenty thousand at nineteen seven, seven fifty is what we're asking from that public safety money to use up for the fire department.
Does this address our concern about subsidizing the townships?
Yeah, and honestly, the concerns about subsidizing the township, thinking about talking about it as a department, if the city wants to purchase these and then just give them to the fire department, we could also go that route. That helps people feel easy about things.
Yeah.
And yeah.
Yeah, I don't want this to be, you know, you guys do stem work, do rank and file, fire department is, you know, you guys do an incredible job. You're a type unit. We will support you in any way we can. I think it's, it's time. I'll make it a motion to approve the funding.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
They just had a thing on the news up in the city. They're making mandatory now for fire to have bulletproof vests.
On top of everything else, you have to.
Right.
That's extra weight. I don't know how heavy they are, but.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want, do you want him to go ahead and order and then?
And.
Okay.
My next.
Yes.
Hi. I have quite a list for you guys tonight. First, Brooke Woodsluggs. I'm here on behalf of mostly sauerkraut days, but partially the lines. So tonight we are here to ask for the council's approval to hold sauerkraut days. The dates that we have outlined are the twenty-eighth through the thirtieth, so sticking with our last full weekend in June. We have a lot of events planned that are kind of the staples that we've had in the past. Car cruises, live music, obviously the parade. And we have a couple of new things planned. So one of the fun things that we're going to try is a junior sauerkraut day eating contest, as well as we're looking for some additional kids activities and performances. So we're excited about that. I also need approval to grant liquor licenses for sauerkraut days in the shelter, as well as the lines in vendor park, I think, to include the applications in your packet, as well as an off-site permit to host lines that go like food companies. I think that was in your packet as well. We have been working hard also on the right of way for the parade. Our committee is aligned that we would ideally like to have the parade down our kind of normal route. Given the roads are going to be closed, we're planning and want your support to submit that much earlier than what we've done in the past. And we have some contingency plans if they don't approve that road closure.
I think we've actually done it during a flood event anyway, so, you know.
Yeah.
So we haven't gotten in trouble for it. So, yeah, it should be fine. But we will, yeah, pursue that.
Do you want to blank a motion for all that?
I think we can just do a blank motion rather than this detailed.
Oh, in what?
Everything she says, make an motion.
I'll make that motion.
Sorry, hold on a minute.
Wait, just have more.
Yeah, just to support the road closures for Third Street for the parade, for the whole weekend, yeah. Or for the whole weekend, sorry. That's right by the school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Basically the same thing that we've done in the past, but should align that, I think.
I'll make that umbrella motion.
Do you want me to repeat it?
Yeah.
No.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? motion made and seconded. Thank you, Brooke. Anything else?
No.
Okay.
Oh, actually.
How you do?
And sorry, this is not on your official agenda, but I just was coming from the lines meeting, and one of the things that we want to do for Arbor Day is to plant some trees up at the Maple Ridge Park. I think we need your approval for it, but curious.
Maple Ridge Park.
Where's that?
The one on the top of the hill.
The very top.
The little.
There's a park.
There's a little park.
It's the half lot that Steve Frey has donated to to put up.
It's like a little park and it's just completely bare.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't say that.
No, but if you have a perspective, you know.
Kurt called me tonight.
Oh, did he? Okay. Did you have a perspective on what you?
I always said that was a good spot to put some trees.
Yeah, I think, right?
Right. There's no shade, you know.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
You said something about like a dozen trees or something. I don't know what you guys are planning, but.
I don't know all the details. We talked about six, so maybe you go over to us with it as well. But, I mean, I can come back informally.
But I mean, if there's whatever amount of trees, if it's too many, I mean, if anybody's got an idea where you could put a few others, it would be greatly appreciated, I think.
Okay.
Just don't put ashtrays on?
No.
No ashtrays. Got it. I don't, I think you just sell ashtrays. Awesome. Thanks, all.
Thank you.
All right. Request to appear before the council. Are there additional? If not, police chief's monthly report. February two thousand twenty-four monthly report for Anderson Police Department. Twenty-five assist public calls, eleven animal complaints, ten assist other agencies, two arrests, five domestic calls, eight ordinance violations, two traffic violations, eighteen traffic warrants, ninety-one directed patrols, and two information only. And two, one of the arrests was for outstanding warrant, another was arrest for domestic. We had a burglary of a firearm from a home. We had theft of a boat at the boat landing. Had an alarm at the library, two disorderly conduct calls. The new portal radios have arrived from wireless in Mankato, alpha wireless, and the squad radios for about five weeks. Yes. We didn't find any. We didn't find radios. We had a theft of a boat at the bay in February in Minnesota.
It was actually rubber raft.
What was that?
It was a rubber raft.
But in February in Minnesota.
Right. There was ice.
Yeah.
You would think it would've been skis or sometimes guts.
All right.
I just have one thing. Eric, if you can address it with your officers, and I know I've asked you before, but on the weekends, they seem to be running up and down one sixty-nine a lot, and that's not in the city.
One sixty-nine?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll talk to them later.
All right. Anything else? We can talk about equipment, but I think it's, we've talked about it before, but we probably should cover the additional stuff beyond the fire department and the police department. And then we've got stuff for James.
Yeah, so along with Eric's stuff at about a hundred and sixty thousand, James will have some modern stuff coming in for equipment, too, probably now looking maybe around two hundred thousand for the north and south coast stations, and has some pumps that he has to work on, and also a generator that we're looking at as well. Also, Bruce is looking at a truck or something similar to the truck he has now. He does have stuff, pictures and such, so bring him in tonight, but we're looking at possible replacement on that as well. The one ton currently is fairly, fairly in rough shape, fairly rotted out. I think that's looking, you know, it's, it just depends on bids, but we're, you know, in that fifty and sixty thousand range for that and maybe some other equipment he's looking at as well. There's also some office equipment that we're looking at, mostly just a computer and a bit of updated furniture. Altogether, that certificate would come in around five hundred thousand. Essentially, right now, we would be working on the stuff for PD. The rest would come in as it comes in essentially until, until we get going on that certificate. I think tonight would be best, there will be no resolutions tonight to approve anything like that, but should talk a bit about what that means for levy next year, essentially. If it was in that five hundred thousand dollar range, it's probably looking at about a seventy-five thousand dollar increase in levy per year for ten years on that equipment certificate.
But in subsequent years, that seventy-five thousand dollar increase does not necessarily a seventy-five thousand dollar increase because we have debt coming off, not in two thousand twenty-five, but in the years following.
Did you say that was for ten years?
Yeah, those are ten years.
It's a, it's a hard bite, but I don't know what else you do.
You know, a couple of years ago, we were basically told that that one ton should not have a plow on it anymore. And we continued to put a plow on the front end and run around with it.
But I don't think you could do it with, but yeah, that particular truck, but I don't think you can do the, do the alleys and the, and the rest of it without that, without using it.
Right.
It's got a plow.
Right.
What's that?
It's got a plow.
Probably.
Yeah, but that one does have a little bit bad.
Well, I guess we can, we can re.
So whatever truck he is getting, he should look if he can have a plow on it.
I guess what he told me is the one ton is, well, it's in the shop again, or going to be in the shop again, but he doesn't want to be having to haul when he runs for parts or run for this. He doesn't want to use his own truck unless you want to work out something with them. Because I don't know how long he's going to be.
How old is that truck?
It's twenty-four. It's twenty-four. It's twenty-four years old.
Yeah, it's with its life, and it's got a lot of glitches, which are probably the worst thing.
Well, let's just wrap it up.
Yeah.
Well, do we need to go something that big, or if he's using it, Steve, to run for stuff, can we go something smaller since we bought that blade for the front of the loader for the sole purpose of doing the alleys and not using the one ton on the alleys?
I guess, I guess what I would recommend is a half ton, and then maybe buy a dump trailer for it to pull around for a home brush and stuff. Yeah, that probably makes sense. I don't know that we save all that much money. It's not going to make any progress.
See what the difference is.
I think what he told me was it was this used one found in a 2011.
Yeah, I think that's what he's.
For around forty thousand something. It's got the all stainless boxes.
Oh, it has a box.
Then it's got a salt spreader on it.
Okay.
I mean, it looks clean, but it's a twenty-eleven. I don't know. The, 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 the equipment on the truck is worth more than the vehicle.
Yeah, is it the diesel?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a Duramax.
Duramax, okay.
Should be.
In office furniture, Tim, we should have a membership with Minnesota Surplus.
Yes.
Which basically has like new furniture for pennies on the dollar.
Yeah, I know. I went there one time and got chairs and.
Our stuff's pretty good. If anybody sits in it, they might fall.
Yeah, our chairs, it's stuffed to heaven. Stuffed out of state for me, I mean.
But getting back to this truck business here, I mean, Bruce says he might work two more years. You know, it depends on what we're going to do in the future.
But it's still.
I mean, we still have the equipment. I mean, if we don't use it, we can sell it. I mean, that's got to be.
Well, and I think this is, this is more for Tim to satisfy the, the, this conversation to satisfy the auditors that we are actually aware of what we're doing, so.
And the other thing with the truck, you got to, you know, we get storms, you got to pick up brush, I mean.
The truck's not a bad idea.
It's probably not going to be running around with a loader too much with it. I don't know.
Now, that won't work, but.
Well, can we move on Eric's stuff tonight?
Well, I think we've already, we were, essentially did that at the last meeting.
Oh, I thought we told him to come back and make sure everything was on state bid.
Yeah, he did.
Okay, let's move on.
The state bid, the, the compare is equal to the state bid.
Yes. If you're, if you're going to, if you're going to move on that, then just make sure you're authorizing city staff to essentially go to work with elders to work on the financing of this. And that's why you may want to consider the entire package at once, otherwise we may have to do this more than once, multiple bid packages.
Well, and I think what Randy is saying is just give, give the police department a green light to make their purchase.
Yes, right.
Don't worry about the financial package as part of that. But you want to make that a motion?
Yes.
Okay. I'll second it. Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made and seconded. Thank you. Hey, did a tree limb really hurt the car on the night you were yesterday?
Pardon me?
Did a tree limb really stall in the car?
Yeah, it did.
And maybe it hurt?
No.
I don't, no, no, we got hurt, but, you know, they were driving along and.
Wasn't it the ground man's vehicle or something, Eric?
I don't know, maybe, but highway patrol took care of it, so. Not a good thing.
Lucky, I guess. You just missed the cab, yes.
All right.
Just wait till the big cottonwood comes down. Dwarfs everything. All right, SEH. Chris?
Can I see you?
Yes, hello, everybody.
Hi.
I own your package. She does some information from you. Last council, I do frame it up in case you don't. Should be on. Should be on there. Okay. So last council meeting, we talked about Beverly Lane and potential of adding that street to the current two thousand twenty-four street or two thousand twenty-three four street project. So I did talk to Jerky, the contractor on it. They are willing to hold a bid price because they have a big kind of project for the change order. So you pay the same unit price for all that kind of stuff as the rest of the project. They do want to confirm with their concrete guys, be sure if there's concrete to blow up in price since this thing has been out, but they don't expect that to be necessarily a concern. So I did develop a basic layout of what could look like on this, on this roadway if you were to connect in on South Street and bring it down to the south, and then connect into the street stubbed out down there now, with the idea of trying to avoid the one residence in that area, and there's a pretty steep hillside as well. So that's just kind of bringing it over. It would be easement, because there's only a thirty-three foot right away, I think, out there. Pretty narrow, thirty foot might be actually. So not a lot of room to work in. So it's to be the south side where it curves through is entirely outside the right way, as I show it there. So it does need easement, but I'd be working with the school, which hopefully will be relatively straightforward. And this would be to accommodate in to the south of the school that develops out. Yeah, so you show kind of a future street alignment, kind of get an idea what that might look like. So showing a T-intersection, which I think is probably appropriate in that location. A couple of things I'm going to highlight for you. Water was reconstructed at eight inch size when that development occurred. It's eight inch going to, to the PRV station, and it's in between smaller, so we proposed to hold the eight inch water main, which we don't currently have a bid item for, because I think it's six inch on the project. So we would have to get a pricing on there. The estimate I gave you is about what exactly would cost, about twenty bucks a foot more than six inch pipe. So there's that verified by the contractor, but seems, seems pretty appropriate. When that last project happened, they built the intersection, but they did not stub any utilities to the west. So the water main goes down Beverly, then turns east. It doesn't have a stub going west. Santry sewers of the intersection to the east does not go west. So if you wanted to stub off sanitary sewer, it expands the scope of this, because you'd have to go to the next street over, which is seventy feet, eighty feet, something like that. So sanitary sewer is not included in my cost estimate, and it's fairly deep sanitary sewer. So if you wanted to accommodate that now, there would be additional cost for that. Or when this develops out as part of a developer agreement, you require the developer to extend sanitary sewers to the next intersection over. It's, it's probably a forty thousand dollar item, quite honestly. It's twenty feet deep on the intersection to the east. Fairly, fairly deep, pretty detailed, and hasn't had to reconstruct a street that you don't need to otherwise build up. So the same thing with the water, could easily have water extension now on the south side. Is that even easier one to put in there? So like going west, but if you're making a new sewer, you can also come apart and do the water, too. So, so those, the cost for the water is included in my cost estimate. The cost of sewer, sanitary sewer is not, depending on how the area develops out, there may be potential to connect to sanitary sewer that's located west of Beverly. So the sanitary sewer was the school, there was sewer main there. That could be a potential connection point. I don't think it's deep enough to get gravity flow in that entire area.
But it could pump.
But it could be, if it had to be pumped, it could go there. Going south of this intersection, next street to the south in this development, sanitary sewer was also not extended there either. So I was looking at alternate places that it could go. It's, it's a shorter distance to go, so that might be an option for sewer to go here instead. But without knowing what's going to happen, elevations or that stuff, it's just making some guesses. So it's fairly deep. It's twenty feet deep at the intersection, sanitary sewers. I have a feeling it could serve a good amount of area, but I don't know exactly how much. So with that said, I provided a lower cost estimate before, and I explained the differences. I did add a storm sewer into this cost system, which I didn't have incorporated, and then the larger water main. So it's about thirty-five thousand dollars of the cost in total between those two. And now I actually have developed layout versus just a length, width type of calculation. So it's a little more refined. So about two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars for construction costs. File design for engineering, about ten thousand dollars, just split plan sheets together. We did survey it already, but we need a road design, utility design, things like that. And then at construction, I said, construction costs are expected to fit with an existing project budget. That's construction engineering, so the rest of the time for SEH. All in total, about two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars between the two. If you wanted to add sidewalk on the west side, has some challenges, but I, I'm calculating about twenty-five thousand dollars to do that. If you want ring sidewalk through that area as part of your comprehensive sidewalk or complete street policy, I should say, you do need to at least consider whether or not you want to add sidewalk to the street. So it would be outside the right way, so you'd also need right way acquisition to make sidewalk work. Thirty-foot street, thirty-foot right away and a twenty-four-foot street going, and there's not enough room to, to make it fit. Acquiring that easement to a right way.
Chris, what is that eight inch main tie-off of? Another eight inch main out there or six inch?
It'd be eight inch on the south side, and then we, on the.
South Street?
Well, South Street, it's, we're showing six inch now, but we would have to change at the eight inch on the east side of the PRV station. So with, it's eight inch going into the PRV station. It goes eight inch away, east of there. I can't recall exactly how far, but we just ensure we have eight inch the entire loop through there, not have anything smaller in between.
Well, I think, and that's, that hydrant replacement would be the one by the school kind of on the lot there.
Yeah.
You know, and I'm just speaking for the fire department. I think that's something we need to do. We were just told by Resource Fire that they need a five inch to feed their aerial, and that's a building that we would be using that aerial on. So if we went eight inch, we'd have a cushion to run other lines.
I'll probably soon get this stuff done as long as they're up in the area and not be finishing those streets. Then we're going to have the equipment later.
Pricing wise, the whole.
Put it in another street.
Yeah, pricing wise, it's very good pricing to be able to stick with the project. The price you get a four million dollar project and do three hundred thousand dollars of work, even if it's out, it's going to be five hundred thousand dollars, plus all the, I mean, the engineering side things.
I don't really need sidewalks, though.
I think we leave that out.
Yeah.
But, well, how does that, how does that affect our financing of, of the rest of the project? It's a short road for us, though.
Yeah, I mean, Chris, I was going to ask you, because you say construction costs are expected to fit. Yeah, and that's, I, I believe that correctly, that construction engineering is, we're, we're still, we have a lot of budget left in our observations, so I don't expect to be anywhere outside of what we have already budgeted for. But as far as your overall costs and funding, I don't have that familiar, I guess, with your bond and anything. Some amount of contingency is expected. This would be probably eight percent of your product cost. So I'm not sure where it was, I mean, there was extra at the end. I think the intent on that was to use at the bottom of Rich Road with the ninety-three project.
Right.
On the old bridge for the, for the interest earnings, essentially, the extra we had on the, on the bond issue itself, so.
And the other thing we, we need to discuss, and relatively quickly, is I think the school has.
They have the sale of the.
The two lots.
And the lots are listed.
The two, the old field where, where we're running back to accommodate, basically the development of that, has been divided into two parcels.
Right, and south.
Is there any description of what they're looking for? Because currently, it's, it's unzoned, essentially, because we haven't rezoned it. So we have to take a look at rezoning it. It doesn't just automatically follow the, follow the neighborhood. So we have that property that we have to look at rezoning, and we have to look at the Catholic Church parking lot for appropriate zoning. So do we want to just continue to do the planning and zoning? I think it's Amy and I at this point, or do we recreate the planning and zoning board with council involvement, but also citizen involvement? We can, we can finish talking about this, and then later in the meeting, talk about the planning and zoning.
So, so one comment I would have on this, this is assuming full reconstruction of the street, putting new water main and new water services. Santry sewer is left alone. Santry sewer is west of the street.
But the water is not.
But the water is on the west edge of the street. There is a scenario here where you say, please want to be water main, and we'll reconnect the water services in if that is, you want to explore. You cut out half the road and you put in new water main, and you don't do a full reconstruction. What do they want to tie in? South side would be a part of that question, but if this area is developed in the future, you would, you'd have a developer agreement, and you could require the developer to construct part of this instead of doing it yourself, too. So if the city wants to push that to a developer, that's certainly your option. If you think it makes it less suitable for development, and you want to make it more shovel-ready, I guess, that'd be the approach to get things done now.
And you're basically talking about the school, the existing school property.
Correct, yes.
And the parking lot.
If that area builds out with houses, there are utilities, streets, utilities and everything, too, so.
But for the back, I mean, that's, that's literally, we have no idea what's going in that area, except that we might as well feed it now and be done with it.
Yeah, so the water main was replaced through that, through the green space in Beverly. That's only water main. So the only water main to replace is just where the street is.
But then you have to come back if they want to do the sanitary sewer.
Well, the sanitary sewer and its location, the conversations I had at the lot previously, is the sanitary sewer on South Street is also not proposed for replacement. Either this, this. this, this could be lined in the future, not slip line like happened on the previous project that we replaced already. But do a cure and place pipe, which would be, it's sixty to eighty year lifespan of that type of material. So that'd be something that could happen at any time. And there's also only four houses on that sewer main in this location on Beverly. So the cost to replace that sanitary sewer per house would be pretty extensive. So better to have line in the future, I think.
But irregardless of what we do, it's going to be, we're gonna have to look for the money at some point. So.
Did you talk to the contractor? Do they have time to do it now?
Yeah, so what Jeremy had planned to do was, there is that easement that goes all the way through. They were going to construct a gravel path early in the project to provide an access to the neighborhood to the south. So all they would do is build a permanent section. They probably want to do that very early in process so that you can keep that neighborhood looking up. So yeah, it just, it just changes it from take out six inches and put in some gravel to take out two feet and build a whole street section mostly.
My assumption is that there's equipment certificates coming, and there's shortfall right now. I mean, any working with others anyhow, then I think the funding could be there soon.
We have to realize it's gonna cost us more money, and that's fine. I mean, we've got the infrastructure almost there.
If we feed these new lots for a developer, I'd like to see some return back on it from a developer.
Yes, and cost share and put building this infrastructure in place.
Do we have to?
Whether it's an assessment or whatever you wanna.
Well.
We have to, we have to put that in the developer's agreement. Some reimbursements, some cost sharing.
I don't think we need to buy the whole building.
He might be fronting it, but then that's actually.
Right. Yeah, I agree with that. That's the.
Does Wacken Sack fees cover part of that?
Not really. I mean, the Wacken Sack fees are, are overall the same for every, every lot in town. So it really doesn't. And literally, you're saying everybody's subsidizing, which we do if we didn't put it in. All right, well, our eyes are open.
Do you need an answer on this tonight?
So what I'd ask for is, kinda, yeah.
Kind of took its turn.
So there's a scenario here where you push it off and they come back and do it later. Some of the benefits from doing the temporary road is taken away because they may build it just as that and versus be able to just get in there and build a hundred and fifty feet of road. What they have to do is to get that connection made to the time being. So you'll pay for the temporary gravel as a pay item for it. So there's a small deduction, but there's a deduction for not paying for the temporary gravel here and doing it permanent.
All right. Think we gotta do it.
In the long run, it's saving us money.
Yeah, if we wait and.
Nothing's getting cheaper.
Yeah, nothing's getting cheaper. And we have.
What's the current pack size on Beverly?
I believe it's six inch, which is the rest of South Street.
So is, so that hydrant, Chris, would that, the low water pressure that comes out of that hydrant there, would that be because that six inch runs through that reducer station?
Well, right after the PRV station here, I guess, maybe I think it's low pressure side of the PRV here. Yeah, so I mean, it's horrific.
So I guess the question I had, and this is kind of a, it's a design item, but do you want that hydrant there? Is there a better spot for it?
No, I think we need that hydrant there. I think we just need to give a better water supply to it.
Okay.
So that all gets taken care of.
Yeah, and I mentioned that because we do have a hydrant on South Street. I guess not, I'm checking how close that was. Because now, now the end of the road, right, it used to be the end of the road, where it is now. Now you're going down all the way through an intersection, which for the height of the intersection.
Well, and I think the school, actually, I think Hilltop's fire alarm system or their water system for sprinkler runs off that line.
Okay.
So, but it's, but the eight inch to the eight inch would take care of it. Everything's, everything's done. I will make it a motion to go forward with this.
I'll second.
Motion made. Seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion made and carried.
We will start file design on this. I will provide a amendment, I guess, I'll bring to the next meeting. That will just be the, the design fee.
And I think we're staying no to the sidewalk?
Yes.
Yes. We'll say no.
There's some easement work through here. Is that something you want to start on? Or you want us working on? Or I guess, as far as moving this road, like I showed in this drawing, we, I don't know. If you want to start building on something, I'll have an easement right if I figure it out.
We should probably figure out the easement.
Yeah.
I would think.
Yeah.
So it is something to start on sooner than later on that part, and we can figure out what you need. And then, okay, maybe a question sometime. Yeah. And then just contact this property or just if you want us to do. The person, these people are not in the project now. So they will be now. And so we can just, we can knock on doors or send letters. I know what's happening here. So they know there's a project, but they don't know they're on it yet. So we'll let them know.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Mr. Mayor Council wrapped up quite a few loose ends following the meeting last month. Didn't want to report to you that the city's purchase of those church lots did in fact close last week or the week before. I've kind of lost track of it. But it did close. Essentially had no issue in it, on it. I don't have the deeds back from Civil County yet, but that typically takes it off to a week. I anticipate getting those sometime next week. But that property has, has closed and it is in our, in our workshop. We're working on closing out the Hilltop property. As you guys have in your packet here tonight, a resolution and a proposed purchase agreement for your consideration to finalize that transaction. Assuming you guys pass it here tonight, the next step would be that we would essentially schedule a closing. And I would anticipate sometime next week, next month, that it will close out. School did meet, the school board met on Monday. They did pass it. So we're well on our way to having that done. Does anybody have any questions about that Hilltop purchase?
Does that include the playgrounds or?
I don't know that.
You can tell them the man.
I don't know if that piece is, I'll definitely.
I would like to know.
Is it supposed, is it supposed to?
Well, that was negotiable, so I don't know. They didn't know yet last time I attended.
I'll actually check the survey here and see if it's all that. Where is that playground actually?
It's on the south.
The south side of the property.
The south side of your parking lot?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's between the properties.
That they sold.
Yeah, sure.
And this parking lot.
Yeah. I can take a look on that. I'm not, I'm not so sure that it does, but I'm not so sure.
They also asked to have it to go to the tree line, so I don't think it is.
Do you have top of the survey?
No.
No?
Well, we do. Well.
It should, it should be in your packet. I think Tim has it in there.
I was just looking for it.
It's pretty deep in the packet.
Yeah, we can see.
Yeah, it is. It is.
It should.
Is it the man?
Something.
I know it was.
I went to the beginning before I came, but of course I didn't see that.
Yeah, here it is.
Okay. Because I saw the one before.
Am I gonna take my glasses?
No, I don't think so. I think this is.
It does, it doesn't put, it puts the sandbox.
Ah, well, that's.
Oh, well then.
Is that?
That would be the park. Isn't the park sitting on the?
I don't know. It seems to be, it seems to be here, the property lot, which is basically running across the back of the school.
Okay, so we'll leave that with them.
Close that.
So it does include that. So to me, it looks like it does include it. Okay, so looking at this little squiggly line, is that the line that we're getting? Or is that?
Nope. We're getting.
This. So then we should be getting the tree line.
It is basically in the trees. Yeah.
That's what we're getting.
Okay. Because the plan was to have the, the water from the splash pad drain into the.
Sure. That's what that is. That should be good, then.
I don't think so.
To me, that looks like it is.
Here's the rest of your packet. I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you.
Well, well, no, no, no. This, this broad line is.
Jason said that is the part we're purchasing.
Hmm, no.
But that looks like it's the school.
It is. The part we're purchasing is.
Is this.
Is this, 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 this.
And then that draw it right.
We think all we're purchasing, so this is the school. So is it just this line? Make sure you know what we're buying for you.
You know what? It is that.
It looks like that.
So you're getting the tree line.
Yeah.
You are not.
You're not getting the park.
You're not getting the park.
We'll leave that for a later date.
Well, do you want me to reach out to them and then infirm that up? I mean, that.
I mean, I don't know. They must not be willing to sell that to us.
That's what they approved on Monday. Randy, you want me to draw up what you're getting?
No, I think I got it.
You got it?
What are we giving for it?
One dollar.
A dollar.
A dollar. Any agreement?
I think that's in the agreement.
It's not in the agreement. There's nothing in there about.
Relying on our goodwill?
One dollar.
One dollar.
Okay.
But you are not getting the.
That's okay.
Yeah.
They have to mull it and take care of it then.
Yep.
All right. So assuming you guys approve that, the next step in that process would be to schedule closing. We can have that closed out next month. If you guys do want me to go back to them and inquire about any of that playground or any other area, I certainly can.
So.
It's staying with the school itself.
And technically, it's still public property.
Yeah.
So kids can still go play on it and we just can't put any of our stuff on it.
Yeah.
I don't know if the school was gonna stop people from.
People go play on it now.
Yeah, I think.
Okay.
Somebody along the school.
And again, if you want me to go back to the school, it's okay.
No, that's okay.
All right.
All right. So we made a motion.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made. Seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion made and carried.
Sales tax ballot language. Tim and I, we had some discussions on that. That is all of it. None, except go on the ballot this November. You guys need to approve that language.
And that is a resolution?
Correct. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero nine.
I will make that a motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion made and carried.
All right, that's all I have for right now. We'll deal with the EDA stuff later.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Do that.
All right. Do you wanna go through yours first?
Yeah. Next in the packet is the, there's a Highway ninety-three revised agreement that came in the other day. This is already approved several months ago. So there'd be no more approval on this. But the original city share was a little over a hundred and thirty-one thousand. That has increased now to about one hundred and sixty-seven thousand. That breakdown's a little bit further along past this agreement. We'll take a look at it as an revised schedule, but this is mostly just for information right now.
So the project came in under, under bid, but yet our cost is going up.
Is it costs that are excluded?
Um, no.
Because I think we thought ours was gonna go down a little bit.
Well, it should, because it, it looks to me like they're, they recalculated based on the initial bid coming in under.
Yeah.
So if the initial bid came in under, how would our share go up?
Unless it was, there, there are some exclusions for the, for the state one. And those are, have to do with the water and sewer.
Yeah, that's where, that's where this whole city portion comes from. It's at the base of Ridge Road. All of the underground water, utility stuff, that's where the increased costs are coming from. And I assume it's from that bid.
Okay. So they were based on estimates before and not like hard numbers.
Yeah.
Well, I think we're stuck with it until we beat them up.
Right.
And we've got two and a half years to beat them up. So it'll be a delightful relationship by the time. All right.
So we need to pass the resolution?
Yes. So the next one, Resolution twenty twenty-four zero eight. It's a resolution to declare a police officer eligibility for PERA. Essentially, Jake was part-time for most of last year. He's transitioned to full-time now. So PERA requires City of Henderson to confirm that he is indeed a police officer here and he complies with these five rules. This resolution states that if that is the case.
I'll make that a motion.
A second.
Motion made. Seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion made and carried.
Twenty-four oh nine, ten, with this act. Resolution twenty twenty-four eleven. Council member resignation. Resolution accepting resignation, preparing a vacancy. Chris, we did this letter last night yesterday. Do you want to read it?
Well, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution and move on with looking for a replacement.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion made and carried.
I'll have to host that for each of us. I'll be okay with having it back by the twelfth and that will be a council meeting, the April council meeting, I guess, the seventeenth.
Yeah.
It will require a special election in November.
Right. She goes on the ballot, or that, that position goes on the ballot. And, but it, it's a special election for a two, for a two-year term.
To fill out the ballots of her current.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do we have to pay for special elections since it's technically a normal election here?
You don't. You don't. No, it would simply go on the ballot this November along with your other positions. It would be designated as a special election. It would have its own block. Yet again, you know, whoever won that special election would then be seated in January.
Yeah.
Whoever you, whoever you appoint between now and then would fill out, that would be seated in January.
All right.
The last one is a yearly liability coverage waiver form. Essentially, it just that the council knows the city does not waive voluntary, it's on a useful tort liability. Once that's approved, I just send that in back to insurance.
All right.
Make the motion to approve that or do you want a motion?
Motion.
Okay, I make the motion.
Second.
Motion made. Seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion made and carried. All right. Do you have anything else?
No.
All right. Now we have the recommendation from the EDA concerning the River Bottom Tavern loan. River Bottom principals have requested a, basically a. River Bottom principals have requested a, basically a development loan from the city. The EDA met, which consists of myself, Steve, Rod Engel, and Jeff Steinborn, and recommended that we, the council, loan the River Bottom Tavern $200,000 to basically get the thing done and open.
And that's, that's our fund that we got in there, right?
Well.
Kind of, yeah.
Kind of, yeah. Yeah, what we've been talking about, we will, we will end up having to finance it, but it creates a revolving which has been lailing for years.
Payback over a long.
Yeah, come on, bring him on. No, we will probably write some requirements into it. We will have to, on paper, basically extend you the cost of the money to the city. That can be negotiated year to year as we proceed. Our recommendation was also to have no payments required until the end of 2000, or beginning of 2025, because really, we won't have everything in line. We will have the money to you, but we won't have anything in line in terms of our permanent type of financing until then. And then stipulations like taxes have to be paid, water bill has to be up to date, just so it looks like we've actually thought this thing through for our.
Yeah. I'll be paying it on time. Saturday. Part of it, anyway.
But, you know, that's, Steve, you got anything to add?
I want to see this thing work.
Yeah, me too.
So I'll make a motion that we move forward with it.
Like what? I need to add one thing, though. I need to add one thing, just from a treasury standpoint, talked to Keith about this. Just so to understand the tax levy part of it, 2025 tax levy would have to increase essentially up to the cost of that loan, less whatever amount is recovered through payments. So potentially, you could see a tax levy increase of $200,000 next year alone to clear out the actual fund, 250. I just want to put that on the table now, so that you understand what that means.
But essentially, you're borrowing money.
Yep, it'd be a borrowing.
Yeah. We borrowed money in line of deals.
Let me chat now on this, if I may. Because I got a feeling I'm the one that's going to be drafting this.
Okay.
Jason, you're back. Meet you too. I'm assuming that this thing is going to go, I just had some questions about it. In terms of the overall paperwork, what I would typically require, what other councils would typically have me do on EDA loans, is we would do personal guarantees from all involved. Anybody that has an interest in the business, anybody that has a stake in it, they would sign personal guarantees. Essentially, what that would do is that would help ensure that in the event of a default, that we would have some methods to try to collect.
You mean like one other than the one that we wrote together?
I haven't seen anyone that.
Yeah, I, I, that personal guarantee that I typed up and we both.
Right, in the packet, there's a personal guarantee for Kelly.
I tried to do all of my homework that I was asked for.
And then we would also do a mortgage on the building. Is that right?
Yeah. That's a normal procedure.
The only problem with mortgage on the building is we're probably going to be third in priority.
No, we're only second so far.
Okay. You're okay with that?
We're okay with that, we discussed it.
I'm not going to be right on this.
No, I know, I know. So personal guarantees, a mortgage, and then we would do a promissory note that basically sets forth the amount that we're loaning and the terms. So I had heard that no payment until the beginning of Jan, until 2025. I'm hearing no payment until January 1, 2025.
There.
What kind of interest rate are we talking?
Half below prime, to begin with.
Is this going to be a fixed rate or an adjustable rate?
It's going to be an adjustable rate, half below prime.
Does that mean you only can adjust down?
Well, I mean, you know, we're getting into these details. You know, typically, we would, we would insert a rate that wouldn't change so that everybody knows what the rule is. And most EDA loans would be between 2% and 3%.
Right, except that we don't have an established EDA fund. That's the situation we have. Now, that given, and as I alluded to before, if, if it is onerous to support this financing, you can come back to the council and during our budget process and say, essentially, what the council would do would be to levy as a development, as a tool, if we had to bring that interest rate down because of hard times, who knows what happens?
Those can always be renegotiated. And in fact, many times are renegotiated. But for the, for the terms of the initial agreement, we probably should have some sort of an interest rate, some sort of an amortization schedule with a payment schedule. What are you guys thinking on that?
What do you think for the boys?
Well, as you know, we're just kind of figuring out where we're going to be at with, we kind of know where bills are coming in as of like, like you say, the building upkeep, but it's not running. So we just have a vague idea of operating costs. We don't really have an idea of income, we got the road closing, but we're going to be new and doing new things. As you know, we're trying to do the two kitchens with the two different restaurants. We're not trying, we are going to do that. So that'll be a different aspect as well. So there's a lot of things that we're doing that we can't really base it on old numbers. So it's hard for me to say what would be easy or what would be hard, because, you know, you guess at a lot of these, even educated guesses, but it is a guess nonetheless, I mean, I mean, we all don't know what it's going to hold with the roads and, but I feel like when we were talking, we knew some of that, we could hold to our advantage.
Yeah, and 15 years, something like that.
I just want to make sure that, you know, it's never going to, you know, anytime I've ever done any kind of loans, I've liked it fixed, because you never want to get where you're all of a sudden used to paying something, and then all of a sudden somebody raises it up and your payment is 25% higher than what you're used to paying, and then that, you know, that's.
Well, then what we could do is we could do a.
But if it was going to go down, then it's okay. We write that in there that we can accept this rate.
What we could, what we could do is we could essentially set a payment, a monthly payment amount with an interest rate, and then there would be a balloon where it would be renegotiated at the fifth year or something. You know, so that you know exactly what your monthly payment is.
Or even the second year.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you could, you could do a balloon at any point in time. I mean, so, you know, we could, we could loan $200,000 with the idea that monthly payments would begin January 1, 2025, and you guys would set what the monthly payment is with a balloon payment, you know, in the fifth year, and to be renegotiated. But we do have to have some basic terms in, in this document. I mean, our auditors, if we don't have those basic terms, we're going to run into all kinds of issues with our auditors. And it is different, it is different because it's a taxpayer funds, so.
Yeah, I mean, if I was up and running, I would know where my income was under that, but.
Well, then maybe it makes sense to do a two-year renegotiation of. And we do a very attractive first.
Low payments the first year.
Low payments the first year that cover interest only.
I think that's a good idea.
I can't just say low payments, though. What is low payment?
What, what are you guys thinking the interest rate would be, and that would help me figure out?
I think prime is at 8% right now.
Yeah, customarily, it would be between 2% and 3% on an EDA loan. So I, I would say on this particular transaction, since interest rates are a little higher and since there is more risk, I know 3%, 3% would be.
No, no, that would be.
2, 2.5, between the middle?
If you're interested in the age, it should be higher.
Well, come on now.
Ten, ten, the usual, two, not the usual, would you?
2% right now, have payments as the interest, and then renegotiate for the second year.
Interest only.
But then you're going to kind of know what your cost is for running your business, and what you can afford for payments.
So at 3%, if we did interest only, that's 500 a month.
And then at the end of the year.
At the end of two years.
Not adjusted, so.
Yeah.
It would, it would be a balloon. So at the end of two years, you know, we would renegotiate it, or you would come to $200,000 in cash and say seven, ten years.
You guys are going to eat their breakfast, lunch, and dinner, right?
I'm going to be there. You'll probably see me five times a day, five times a day, five times a week.
Perfect.
I'm always through there.
You'll see us all there.
Might even write on receipt.
Mom, are you up with the day after? So what kind of balloon do you feel this is coming for me, like?
Well, again, it would, it would be 200,000, first thing to not do until January 1, 2025. An interest-only loan, 3%, you would make $500 a month payments, and at the end of that two-year period, you would owe $200,000.
But this is really just to treat a renegotiation. We're not, we're not saying that we're only making this loan out for that. We're saying then we have something, you've got something that you can really bring to us and say, this is what.
Okay.
Things go really good, you know, and interest will be less.
That's my plan, yeah. So when my, just paying the interest would start when?
January. January 1, 2025.
You're saying payment and interest.
You would not, you would not need to make.
And that would be for two years?
Correct.
Okay, and the road will be open after that?
I can't guarantee that.
Well, six, well, at least, right?
Six, well, yeah, by that time, six, God willing, the river don't rise.
All right, that should be like a table or something. I mean, we'll be open then, so, yeah.
If you think you can.
You could roll in nights and get some good motorcycle groups coming through.
Like I said, I got 30-some people from Sleepy Island, several that used to come over here every other weekend.
Perfect, did you tell them to come Saturday and Sunday?
They spent a lot of money.
Yeah, but I have lots of heat, Amy. I mean, cold ride your motorcycle. Oh, well, I'll warm them up, I can do it with some Irish stew.
Who cares, any group would be there, they're a real money maker.
I got wine.
So, we good?
Yeah.
So personal guarantees.
So do you need a different personal guarantee than I already did?
I have to.
I didn't, I just typed, so you might need me to sign it.
Yeah, it's going to have to be notarized and all that official stuff.
Okay, okay.
And it's, it's a form that I use. And then a promissory note that just sets forth what we talked about, no payment until January 1, 2025, $200,000 to your balloon, 3% interest, interest only. Okay? We good?
We good.
All right, and you guys are okay being second or third in priority?
What's that?
And you guys are okay being second or third in priority? In a perfect world, you know, we'd be first in priority over something. There's no guarantee. Okay, you're going to go collect if this goes south.
That's fine, I see Keith, it will go south, I've never.
I'm the lawyer, I got, I'm worrying about that.
It's just for vacation, probably two days now at this point, I'm so busy, and then come back. So, do you know how, if you like, this isn't going to work for tonight, then you're going to need to do some paperwork?
Correct.
So how busy are you on your paperwork?
She wants it done right away.
She needs the money.
I know, but we can approve it.
We can approve it based on.
I, I, I should have drafted no later than Monday.
Monday, okay.
You wanted it yesterday?
No, everyone's been holding on till Thursday, so now I'll have to tell them Monday, but as long as.
It will be no later than Monday.
Monday, perfect.
So.
And what I will be reading, and if they come with pitchforks after you, just send them to Jason. I'll just put them where it's written.
One, one final thing, how are, how are we doing this? Our, most cities would essentially put the 200,000 in trust, and they would submit bills, and we would do draws off of that 200,000. How is this?
I think we're going to disperse the 200,000 and stay out of it, just because.
And I can keep track of what I spent it on, so you guys know. And you have, I gave them my stack of bills, so they'll generally know where at least almost, if not all of it is going.
When are we going to disperse these funds?
As soon as you say you've got all your paperwork.
We've got it in the account, it's ready to go.
Yeah.
Is that a yes?
I'm going yes, I'm going yes, he might be gone.
So I'll take down their email information, and we'll get to work on drafting it, and we'll essentially do a loan closing sometime.
Okay, so I make the motion to approve everything Jason just said.
Yeah.
Second.
You, you're second. All right, motion made, seconded and all, favor signified by saying aye.
You're the one that's got the input.
Yeah.
Opposed, motion made and carried. It's done.
I will not be wrong, I promise.
Fair daughter of mine.
I'm trying. Yes, thank you. So I'll see you Monday? It's 6:30 AM.
Same place he just made.
Happy to see this junior on the road. All right, see you.
All right.
I got to go to work, but thank you guys very much.
Thanks, Kelly. See you, Nancy. Uh, planning commission. So we have those two properties in particular that need to be, I mean, literally, they're zoned public right now, or zoned on.
There's nothing.
There's nothing.
Are you talking about the two properties, like Hilltop and the school?
Two by Hilltop and then the, actually, the church. The church directory. And although I don't know that we have to change the zoning on the church itself, because that's just in our.
Do we have a map of that?
What's that?
There is no zoning on church at all.
Right, nothing has ever been done, except to make.
You need to zone it.
We have to zone everything, so we have those parcels that we have to. We need to have a planning commission, either do it internally as we have in the past, or recreate the planning and zoning commission with membership from the citizens, citizenry. Currently, I and Amy represent the city, and that's fine with me. But do we want to continue to do it that way, or do we want to reestablish?
I think we should continue to do it that way.
Just have the two of us do it?
Yeah.
Okay, we can do that. Steve, what do you think? Okay? And we'll do it that way? So essentially, and you would have an interest in this, is that we will schedule a planning and zoning meeting, Amy and I, and do some studying up and determine what is the appropriate zoning for these properties, the school and the church, and come back to the council to establish those classifications.
Perfect.
Perfect.
Do you have to do a public area and square that?
Probably.
Yeah.
Further down the line, yeah, have to come up.
That's what we figured out.
It would have to be done by order.
Yeah, right.
Order here.
Yeah. So we'll move forward that way on those.
What's the timeline, roughly? Not long, you two, I just go back.
Well, my first meeting really will be within a couple of weeks.
Yeah, after I get back.
Oh.
So probably get to the 25th.
We get to the 25th, we'll have our planning and zoning.
Three weeks, you said? Yeah, I can work with that.
All right. Anybody, city council, anything? Bills? We like the bills?
Yeah, good time.
They were okay. I would just ask the personnel committee to start having the police department do their own backgrounds on officers because we paid almost $1,500 for somebody to do a background on an officer.
Okay.
And that's something that can be done internally.
We decided to do that quite a while ago.
I know.
We will talk to them. All right, so, motion for the bills?
I'm making a motion.
Seconded.
Motion made seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
For the bills, old business? New business? Informational items? Revised meeting schedule?
One thing I have, I have to add the local board of PL's equalization, that'll, yeah, April 24th, that'll be at 6 PM, I'll add that to this. Also, you have a regular meeting scheduled for June 19th, which is the 19th holiday, so I would suggest moving that one week behind to Wednesday, June 26th, regular meeting time at 7 o'clock.
That's our group.
That is.
But it's better to go, better to go later in the month, and we have to find out at the beginning of the month, is.
Yes, can we just go Thursday?
But that's worse.
No, I mean.
Keep it at Wednesday.
June 19th, can we go the 20th?
And have it on Thursday?
I don't care.
I mean, that's not the weekday, I'm sorry for that, is right?
No, no. Although I might be in Canada.
Oh. I, and I'll just.
No way, June, no, June 1st.
Yeah, I may not, during that week as well.
You can just go.
You're going also, I like.
Oh, the 20th?
It's like, I was going to go that week.
Oh, you're going to go.
I was going to go.
Oh, okay.
That's fine, keep it the 26th.
Yeah, I think we can, we can make that work.
Short agenda.
What's that?
Yeah, short agenda, don't let any.
We got to stop adding.
You got, you get two inches of paper.
Yep.
When is the equalization meeting?
It's April 24th, 6 PM.
Isn't that normal, we just did it right before our council meeting, didn't we?
Yeah, they set the schedule.
They set it, we don't have a choice.
All right, so that's it.
And you're still certified, right? And so am I, okay.
Yep, we're still good.
So what time is that one?
6.
So you have a council meeting right after that one?
Uh, there is a council meeting.
There is?
No, because we have a council meeting on the 18th.
Oh, 10.
So we have two then.
They said that's going to lie.
Unless you guys want to change April 18th to April 24th, so we get it all done in one night.
I'd rather do it that way, to change the regular meeting to April 24th.
Yeah, it would save some money.
And normally the equalization one takes maybe an hour?
Yeah.
So if we start that one at 6, or we could still have our council at 7.
Yeah, that's fine.
At least it's in the evening now, it used to be at 3 in the afternoon.
Really? Yeah, it used to be, yeah.
And no working person could come to it.
Oh, yeah, that, that worked out for retired.
The only thing to consider with that, though, is.
Bills.
That's almost six weeks between meetings and that.
Hmm. Well.
It's okay.
If we move it to the week before, then, I don't know that that can always, if there's, if there's something that has to be done, or have a special, so.
Yeah, I'd do it with that.
It's possible we might have a special meeting. Henderson's flashpad, if we apply for a grant, it's due April 1, and we would need council approval to send it in. But who knows if we're going to.
When does it get?
It's due April 1.
So sometimes by the end of the month?
Yeah.
Oh, well, if we have to have a special meeting, we'll have a special meeting.
I don't know, we'll get it by then.
What do you do then?
Don't submit it.